Is Cassandra? Is Cassandra joining us?
She's not joining us tonight.
Oh, all right. Well, anyway. All right. Going to order the meeting of the planning board of May thirty-one to twenty twenty-three. Alphabetical roll call. Who's here?
Our Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here. Amy, you're muted. Amy's here, but Kevin Garnett.
Kevin Hein here.
Gerdur Hobson here.
Okay. All right. And then the first thing I wanted to discuss tonight before we get to our business is some congratulations. First to Kevin, who was now a full-fledged regular voting member for the next year. Well, that was a resounding victory. Well, I only got thirty-seven right in votes. He got sixty-seven. Consider that a mandate for him to.
Congratulations, Kevin.
And congratulations to Chris. Chris, if he's out there to his election, to the board, the select board, good for him. And big congratulations is for Cassandra, who's not here, but Cassandra has been officially named the town planner as Lauren's successor. And she's taking that position and Montana Castle, who was hired as whatever originally the benefits, no, the grant writer or whatever, she's stepping up to the assistant role. So congratulations to her, and I think we'll all be well-served by both of them. All right. Now, next to the tradition, I'm going to turn this meeting over to Lauren to conduct our reorganization vote.
Thank you, Tom, and it's good to see everyone. Thanks for having me. So the first item on your agenda after the annual town election is the annual planning board post-election reorganization. I'll just give it to you. There are sort of two options that I've seen this done before. You can either, if someone has an idea to vote for a slate of candidates, the positions that you're looking to fill are chair, vice chair, and clerk. The difference between the roles there are is that the chair really leads the meeting as Tom has been doing for the past year. They sort of coordinate more closely with the staff person on a sort of weekly or bi-weekly basis, depending on when your planning board meetings are. So it is a little bit more of an uptick in activity in what your time commitment is. The vice chair is there to step in in place of when the chair can't be there. So if chair's not there, the vice chair will chair the meeting. Or, for example, if the chair is conflicted out for some reason, they can't sit on a on an application, perhaps they're in the butter, the vice chair will take over in that scenario if they need to recuse themselves. And then the clerk really is there, I guess, in a scenario in which the chair and vice chair were not there, the clerk would then take over next in sort of succession to chair the meeting. But the clerk really in this board's past story has just read the public hearing notices before each public hearing is opened. They also, in some traditional cases, will work more closely with the person who keeps the minutes, but you have administrative staff people who keep the minutes and work closely with the town planner. So I think you'll be sort of fair in that aspect. So.
We haven't had a clerk. Nobody's stepped up for clerk for the last year or two, so I hope somebody does.
That's right. You won't have me anymore to read them. So I've been reading them for the past year, so.
Before we continue, number one is Angela actually taking minutes tonight. I don't see her.
She will take them off of the recording.
Okay. And then Amy now seems to be twice. I noticed her in the attendee thing a minute ago.
Can you elevate me, please?
You're here. Okay, so.
So back to the vote. So you, what you can either do is you can vote for a cast of either chair, vice chair, and clerk in a slate of candidates, or if you'd like to take them one at a time, I'll open the floor to a member to make a motion first for either the chair or for a slate of candidates.
Well, we should have some discussion, perhaps. I mean, I, I, I think in, in the past, in the way the selectmen do it, the, the chair rotates. To the extent that planning board work is technical, detailed, and there's different kinds of votes for different kinds of applications, special permits, A and Rs, et cetera. I would, I would, I would, and, and I know that Kevin and Deidre haven't been on the board for an awfully long time to observe over a number of years, but it seems to me that, that either of those haven't chaired yet and they might consider whether they feel ready to. I don't know. Do either of you guys feel ready to chair in terms of rotating chairmans and, and and the technical aspects of running our meetings?
I see Amy has a hand up.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to get myself. I, I literally just took two hours to get back from Boston, so I wasn't able to hear what people were saying. And so I didn't hear what Clark said. But I, but I, I did hear the start of it, and then I was trying to switch from my phone to, or to the, the screen. But, but I, I appreciate what, where Clark was going in terms of having a rotating chair in normal circumstances, but this is not normal circumstances. We are about ready to change the bylaw after more than two decades. And I think that the leadership of the board should remain as it is until we complete that task.
I would add to that comment and add that I am on a learning end of this and will be for some time. I really appreciate the depth of discussions, the depth of knowledge that goes into this by those that have been on this board and served much longer than I have and remain so. And I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the guidance provided by others, especially when it comes to leading meetings. And I would not preclude any decision by us to say we should rotate just for the sake of rotation. I think all people that have depth of experience and knowledge on this can serve in that role, and I think the town is well-served. And would be perhaps in this instance to have a additional person serve in the chair capacity, even if they've already been holding that position.
And Kevin, and thank you, Kevin. I would, I would echo Kevin's comments as well as Amy's. I'm going to be very honest. I I feel very junior in this whole process, still a huge learning curve. In addition to that, I have some personal things that I have started to get involved with that have been a lifelong passion for me that I want to continue to focus on, and I do not have the time to do both. It's something that's very near and dear to my heart and what I was previously involved with and feels and is very important to me. So I as much as I'm very committed to planning board, I'm not in a position right now to, to assume, you know, a leadership role. In addition to that, I do really feel we are at sort of a critical point now with regard to the bylaws and getting the changes we want done. And I do feel that it is important to have some consistency in the leadership that we've had leading us through this process at this point. So that's what I would share.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I, I would, I would offer to chair the, the planning board. I understand Amy's concept on revising the zoning bylaws, but I mean, I've been on the, this board for fifteen years, written a number of bylaw changes in terms of the mechanics of running the meeting in relation to the bylaws and understanding what the, what the bylaws mean. I certainly would say that that I'm an expert in understanding that and conveying what the changes in the zoning bylaws actually mean from being a registered architect for thirty years and, and using bylaws for their purposes in, in many different communities. And to, to some extent, I, I think that it's healthy if we have a rotation of chairs for the board and for the, for the public. Bylaw changes notwithstanding. So I would offer to chair for the next year.
I, I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I I would like to continue. I usually believe in rotation myself, but I would like to see the bylaw process through. And I think that it helps that I am the chair of this board as I am working on that process. Once the process is done, which is probably next Springstown meeting, I will gladly step down from everything. I'm not even sure I'll sit out my term till twenty twenty-five at that point, but I do want to see this process through. And, you know, I would appreciate your support to allow me to do that.
Can I ask a question? I should have raised my hand. The position that Kevin's moved out of, do we have somebody in mind to move into that position, or has anyone?
We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to bring that up with the plant, the select board. That would be that would be an appointment at this point. I think Kevin's term as an associate was for three years, so I think the same rule applies to a regular seat. We'd fill, fill it for one year, and then that person would have to make a decision a year from now to rerun for it. But yes, I I would bring that up as soon as possible because I think we benefit from having an associate on it. Many voices dealing with these. Okay.
Amy raised her hand.
Uh, yes. On the basis of the discussion that's taken place at this moment, I would like to nominate Tom Callahan to be the chair of the planning board for this next term.
I would second that motion just put forth by him.
All right, we have a, a first and a second. All motion in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
All right, that's four in favor, one opposed. The motion carries. So next, we'll take a motion if there's anybody who would like to nominate a vice chair.
Nominate Amy. I think the continuity is very helpful and important to us for this next year.
Is there any second or discussion?
A second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, we have four, first one, that motion carries. Is there anyone who would like to nominate a member for the position of clerk?
Since we haven't had one, that I, I would really encourage and welcome a volunteer. And you'll start tonight by reading some public notices, but that's really what the job entails. I just think you know, our staff has enough to do, and it would be nice if someone took on that task during the meeting. We, you know, traditionally, that position's always existed. I think Paul Grady was the last one to, to perform it, so. I, I would ask somebody to step up to it, but I'm not going to nominate to force somebody into it. I think it's more of a, you know, we've gotten along without it, but I think it's important that we do it, so.
Can I ask, is there any reason for the vice chair not reading the notices?
No.
So if no one else steps up, I'm happy to do that.
Any one of us can do it, but I mean, that's, you know, that, that really is what the clerk does. There's not, we, since the clerk is not necessary to take minutes, that takes away a giant function of a clerk. But if nobody wants to do it, then we'll, we'll just go on, but we'll have somebody, Amy, do it rather than staff having the feeling to have to do it. But just means you have to have the text of them in front of you before every meeting, so. Is everybody okay with that as a, as a path forward?
Thank you, Amy.
And thank you, and thank you all for your support. If we're ready to go on, well, what do we have? Fifteen minutes, or can we start? Do we have minutes to, well, do we have minutes to approve? I think we have two sets of minutes, I believe. I thought I saw Angela had distributed. We'll find them in a minute.
I was not provided with that information.
All right. Looks like we have minutes for April twenty-sixth and May ten, that she distributed on May twenty-second. Anybody in a position to make a motion to approve both of those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Those two meetings, no, the dates again.
April twenty-sixth.
I do have them.
Yeah, April twenty-sixth and May tenth.
May tenth.
Yep. All right, I'll second those. Alphabetical roll call, all in favor?
Our Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
Gerdur Hobson, aye.
All right. As we're reading for seven o'clock, does anybody else have any issues they'd like to discuss? I'll just mention that the bylaw committee is meeting with the select board on Tuesday. They were meeting last night. They went over some of their goals for the years, and they discussed some of their financial issues and their infrastructure issues and playground issues. And the zoning process is on tap for next Tuesday. I'm going to try to get some policy direction for them on a couple of issues, but also just give them a general overview of our road ahead towards the next two town meetings. All welcome. It's a joint meeting with the bylaw committee, but anybody, of course, is welcome to attend. They meet live at the auditorium. They're on Zoom as well. So it will be on the sixth. No idea what the time is.
Typically, when we reorganize, we also confirm committee assignments. And to a great extent, it makes sense to keep everybody on the committees that they're on. But to the extent that somebody doesn't want to be on a particular committee or there's some other change.
Yeah, no, thanks, thanks for bringing that up as I did think about that. But Chris Plex was on the community preservation committee. That typically is something we've always participated in, and it's more
Right.
somewhat important. So somebody does need to volunteer to step up to that seat.
Usually, it's just a couple of meetings. I was on it years ago. There's just a couple of meetings around town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, the workload's not.
Not every two weeks for the whole year.
Right. It's not super intense. Does anybody want to step up and be the liaison to the community preservation committee?
Is, is that based on people, members' availability around the time of the town meeting when that gets scheduled? Is that how it's been?
Yeah, they, I, I, I don't know that they have a set night when they meet when they do it, but they, yeah, Lauren, I don't know, maybe you have some input on that. They, they get pretty intense, you know, leading up to town meeting, they have to go through the applications that they get and then make recommendations, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Lauren.
Sorry, I was just going to add that they do, I mean, there's rotating members each year, so they do try to, they don't have a set schedule. They do try to organize around availability at the time, but you can almost always count on a busy like March-April season leading into an annual town meeting because it typically there's having sort of action take place before the annual town meeting warrant closes, leading up to that town meeting that takes place typically in like May or at the latest in June. And then if they add a special town meeting, you would look to about like, you know, a month to, to six weeks out ahead of that. The, the special town meeting timelines have a little bit more of a succinct timeline. But as Clark indicated, it really is sort of an uptick of activity leading in to, into a, a town meeting season.
And they have representatives from various boards, so they do have to accommodate everybody's schedule. You know, to make sure, make sure that they have their attendance, but so, I mean, it's an important committee. It gives you some insight and a lot of things that are going on. Certainly the things that are being asked for money for, so. Anybody want to volunteer? It's, it's available. Amy?
Um, just another.
All right, well, go ahead, Kevin. Ask a question.
Is, is it as an observer role? Is that as a full participant?
You're a participant, so I think it's a seven-member committee. And so it's, you're, you're one of the seven votes to decide on the various projects that come before it and decide on yea or nay on funding and supporting a project, so. Russ Panetti's been the chair for a very long time. I was on it when it was first created in the early two thousands and then for a short time as the open space representative a couple of years ago, but it's it's, it's a good committee. It's, it's, you know, we set the standard many, many years ago about being very thorough and examining the projects. People just don't get money simply for asking. So, you know, you're going to do some probing questions and serious work there because you're spending taxpayers' money, so. Whoever's, you know, the rep, there's, I don't know how many, three citizens at large and four, I think, are from committees on that committee, something, something like that, but you all have the same vote, so.
But, but in general, you, you're kind of representing the planning board kind of position on matters of C, CPC, so there may be things that you bring back to the planning board from a meeting or questions and try to build consensus on something that might be controversial. And then re, re-upload that perspective back to the committee.
Amy, you were going to say something, or were you?
I just wanted to say that, that I remember running into Russ, and he had made a comment about his longevity on the committee and that, so I think that, that it would be useful for us to understand what his plans are simply out of courtesy, so that we, we select somebody who will be able to be effective on that committee. And if we have a potential of a committee chair change, that would have a liability attached to it potentially for one of the members of the committee itself.
Yeah. Well, we don't have to decide it tonight. If people want to do some more homework, I would encourage anybody who's interested to reach out to Russ because he can explain it as best as anybody what they do. Or you can certainly look up on the website who's on the committee. You might know somebody who's already on it and you know, get the lay of the land, but let's, let's try to get this in place at least by our meeting next week. Lauren?
Sorry, that was an unintentional hand.
Uh, I would like to make one other comment, which is Clark is correct in that we do at the start of every new season of planning board look at the committees that we have people placed on and then confirm their interest in remaining on there and also, if necessary, to identify new people who might take someone else's place. So I would recommend that for our next meeting, that we have people paired to committees, and then we look at what's empty or what has the potential to change and then make some kind of determination about membership then.
Right, okay. I remember last year, there were some traditional liaison assignments that this committee took on that we didn't fill that nobody seemed interested in. Clark and I are both are this committee's representatives to the bylaw committee. I would speak strongly in favor of continuity there since we're so knee-deep in it, waist-deep in it at this point. And what, what else do we have?
Well, we have the affordable, we have the affordable housing.
Affordable housing master plan, which is
Right.
seems like.
I'm, I'm now, right now slated on the historical societies.
Right.
Operating committee. So that's why, I mean, I don't have them on the top, off the top of my head. That's why I thought we should actually have a list and then discuss it.
Lauren, can you ask Cassandra to put that together for next week and just recap what we have and recap, and also anyone's we in the past have had liaisons to that we don't?
Absolutely.
I thought we had one on open space and we don't anymore. That was.
We, we did have a, a member on open space, but then I believe it was
It was me.
And when Paul Grady moved to
Yeah, it was me after I left.
That position.
Yeah. It was me when I came on this board, I think, for a while, and then either Paul filled it or it wasn't filled. That's one I know is not filled. Master plan is unfortunately seems to be a moribund committee at this point, but that's something I think we need to take up with the select board.
At, at this point, I think I'm actually on a master plan as the board chair, planning board representative.
I think you're the vice chair at last, last look, you, with the chair being vacant, so.
I'm the last one standing.
I've suggested that you become the chair to get it going again, but that, that, I, that I think is a larger discussion with the select board because I think there's reasons why it's moribund, but we'll, we'll take that up. But yes, we could have that list. We'll go over all of our appointments and those of you who are interested, do your homework on community preservation and you know, you might look at what they probably on the website, you could probably gather together what meetings they had before this town meeting, and you can see what the intensity was just leading up to town meeting. But absent them getting an application for funding in an off time of the year, they, they really don't need the rest of the year, so. All right. We're close to seven. Or, let me see, I had the agenda up somewhere.
You, you can get started because they're actually advertised for six thirty PM, but the
Oh, okay.
Agenda times are approximate.
All right, fine. And we'll get started then with our public hearing or a large home review for three seventy-four Atlantic. Who is going to read that public notice?
I'm going to read that public notice, so bear with me if I stumble. Pursuant to MGL, chapter forty dash A and three hundred dash five point four of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform. Webinar ID eight four four six seven three two four zero five eight. Passcode three nine three four seven five on Wednesday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three at approximately six thirty PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on Cohasset assessor's maps. E two dash two two dash zero zero five three seven four Atlantic Avenue, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for a large house plan review for renovation addition to a single-family home for a new total residential gross floor area per NRGFA per N of forty-two forty square feet. The application is submitted by Richard and Sarah Alphen of three seven four Atlantic Avenue, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town's clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Cohasset MA dot org slash forward slash five two four forward slash active PV applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time so designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you, Amy. All right. John, you're going to be presenting this one for us?
Uh, yes. Good evening. John Turiaki, Turiaki Architectural Design, and I'm here. I believe the homeowners are here as well, which, and Sarah often, and I think they wanted to say a couple of words. Not sure if you see them in the audience, but.
They'll be joining as panelists momentarily.
Great job reading those minutes, Amy. I also understand why artificial intelligence is being used to take over.
Great job reading those minutes, Amy. I also understand why artificial intelligence is being used to take over certain jobs.
I'll work on that one, Kevin.
No, I think if we can, if we could get capacity for that and just press play, that's our
We'll bring Terminator to the planning board, that would be great.
Um. Try it.
I do, I I do want to mention something at the outset, you know, my first hearing under a new term is to be an ogre, but um we got a new, we got additional materials from you today, um, one of the members brought this to my attention and you know, that we ask for things a week in advance for a reason. I mean, I didn't even get a chance to look at it, I was so flat out today and I uh, you know, if it's, if it's a significant change, I mean, the inclination is to punt this to next week, but if it's insignificant, maybe, you know, I'm going to leave it to the board to decide, but you know, with all due respect, you know, you're before this board a lot, we have to respect our time too, and when we ask for a week in advance, we mean a week in advance, so. I'll save that and be the ogre at the moment. I'll let you go on you with your presentation and then the board will decide later what it wants to do.
Sounds good, and I I'll just make a quick note on that. I apologize. Usually we comply with that one week notice. Carefully, uh, in this case, uh, there was no change. It was just a site plan with some additional information that we thought would be helpful, and we submitted that yesterday. And um, I apologize, and going forward, we'll make sure you have at least one week's notice with any kind of information. I'll I'll um, pass it to uh, Richard.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. Um, I thought I might just give a brief introduction. Uh, my name's Richard Offen. Uh, my wife Sarah and I have lived in Cohasset since two thousand fourteen. Uh, we have three girls in the Cohasset schools. Um, we moved to three seventy-four Atlantic in um two thou- uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and we love this house and this is sort of our spot that we think we're going to be in as long as we're in Cohasset. Um, about six months after we moved in, we found out that we were pregnant with our our fourth child and and son George, um, and that's really sort of the genesis of why we're here tonight. Um, the home has four bedrooms on on the the second floor. Um, and there's really no hallway to get from the bedrooms on the front of the house to the master bedroom in the back of the house. Um, and so the primary purpose of this project is to add a fifth bedroom um, on the second floor of the house and then add a hallway so they can get from the front of the back, front to the back without going through um, one of the existing bedrooms. Um, so a- a- as you'll see as John walks you through uh, the plans. Um, the way we decided to do this was there's an existing structure off the right side of the house, um, which is currently a sunroom. Um, and we decided to to use that structure, but also come forward towards the front of the house. Add an office, turn the, turn the sunroom into more of a a family room, uh, living room area and then um, put one of the reconfigured bedrooms above it and the new bedroom above the um, above the office. And I think, you know, when we but the only other thing I would mention is that when we purchased the home, one of the reasons why we loved it was because of the Victorian architecture that you see in in various uh, places around town, and so we went to great lengths to really try to preserve uh, that Victorian look, and I think John did a very nice job, um, kind of folding that into uh, the new plans. And so with that background, um, I'll turn it over to John. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, I'm gonna share my screen. Also, we we submitted a brief narrative on the project uh, outlining where the addition is going to be. So Atlantic Avenue is is to the north here. Existing house. There's an existing sunroom here, the octagonal shape that's going to be part of this addition essentially. And on the first floor, as as Richard mentioned, uh, we have uh, an office and a sitting room and the second floor, on the second floor, there's going to be an extra bedroom above. The existing house is already slightly over thirty-five hundred square feet. And the fact that we're increasing it uh, by about seven hundred nine square feet to a total of four thousand two hundred forty square feet uh, is why we're uh, needing the large home review. I'm just going to switch to uh, some scale comparisons that we submitted. This part of Atlantic Avenue, as you know, um is densely populated with large homes, not just by square footage, but also by scale. So it is certainly a neighborhood of homes that are about the same size or even larger uh, with some exceptions. Uh, but so in general, the the house, you know, being from eighteen seventy-four, Second Empire style. Uh, we, what we are trying to do is to complement the design with the addition and not try to dominate the existing house, which is already has a very uh, nice presence on the street. And try to extend that appearance without um again, without conflicting with the historic appearance of the house on Atlantic Avenue. I just wanted to put the existing front elevation and proposed front elevation side by side. I thought that would be helpful to see them together. Just to see the addition piece we're adding in the front and what you would see from Atlantic Avenue, and again, the main body of the house. Uh, we are also extending the front portico into more of a front porch. And continuing the same uh, details of the mansard roof, the elaborate trim work, the corbels and similar materials um, as in the existing house. I'm just going to switch to the the right side view or more of the Western view. Again, existing and proposed side by side, just to get an idea of uh, the fact that what we're adding is really trying to complement and fit in with the architecture of the existing house, or is the existing right side view with the existing sunroom piece protruding, and here's our addition two-story with a new mansard roof and new dormers to match the existing. So those are really the two most prominent elevations. I'm just going to go to the floor plans real quick to walk you through the plan relationships. But here's the existing floor plan. Now, Atlantic Avenue is to the south of this plan. We kind of got turned around a little bit. The sunroom is being extended and upstairs, the existing bedroom area is going to be extended in this fashion. So here's a proposed first floor plan. That sunroom becomes more of a sitting room with a small home office expansion uh, with a projecting bay as we saw in the front elevations. And then upstairs, uh, essentially the hallway is extended to add a new bedroom with some reconfiguration in the floor plan as well. We did submit a light fixture detail cut sheet and noted the new light fixtures that would only be um, along the uh, the front porch here. And then where we have a flat roof in the back. Uh, one of the ideas is to uh, turn, put decking on it and turn that into a deck, and we have a kind of a sconce, some sconce lights shown on that side. But otherwise, there will be no lighting change, exterior lighting changes to the existing house. From a site plan perspective, there is no change to the existing circulation patterns. There's already a port, a portico here, there's already a walkway, none of that is changing, uh, we're just extending the front porch. Uh, and there are no changes to the driveway or or the grading on the site. Uh, so with that, I'm I'm happy to um, answer any questions and go into details as needed.
Could you show us the height and file again?
Yes. So I, the uh, average grade uh, was calculated by the surveyor. So we are thirteen foot two to the one-story portion of the addition and the existing top of ridge is almost at thirty feet, twenty-nine feet, eleven and a half. And we are basically matching that ridge uh, again, to 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 fit in, to extend that existing look. Uh, and then we have kind of a lower ridge line here that will come down because of the geometry of the mansard roof. We can also see on the side view that the new ridge is is matching the existing.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask, is
Hold on, you've all, you've all said, John?
Uh, yes, sorry, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, uh, Amy.
Yeah, I just was wondering if there's um, additions to the impervious surfaces.
Yes, uh, that's all, uh, the survey provided a breakdown as a note here on the site plan. There's a total of four hundred and forty-five square feet added as as net impervious area as part of the covered porch and also the difference of the two footprints here. Uh, so four hundred forty-five square feet, total net impervious is added.
Does that require that you go before the conservation commission, given the location of the residence?
Uh, since it's under the five hundred square foot threshold, it doesn't.
Okay.
And also, we are outside of the wetlands hundred-foot buffer line, which is um further back towards the property here. So we, so we are not within any wetlands buffers.
Kevin?
Yeah, you mentioned
I'm going to continue the manner of doing in alphabetical order, so everybody stay used to that. All right, go ahead, Kevin, sorry.
Um, yeah, could you uh, provide some additional um, information with regarding to the lighting that you would be adding to the second floor uh, for potential, um it sounds like a rear-facing deck, but I'm um, concerned, given the elevation of that, um, and you didn't mention any shielding of those lights that there could be trespass to either neighbors near or far uh, from light spillage, um. Any opportunity for um, control of that?
Oh, yes, and um that deck is actually, it's on the first floor level, so here is the grade of Atlantic Avenue. And that's an existing flat roof, so if I go back to the, I'm just going to scroll back to the existing elevation. So there's an existing flat roof, which is actually a basement wing that was added a while ago, and it has a rubber roof, so the idea was to put some decking and railing on top of that. So from the Atlantic Avenue perspective, that will be basically on ground level. Um, and as part of adding the deck and railing, we were showing two sconce lights. Uh, and the other factor is that they are behind Atlantic Avenue is to the lower part of the screen. They are, they are behind this addition, so from the street, they'd be pretty well concealed.
But the elevation does, so they're on the south side of the building?
Uh, more, more the west side.
South or west side?
Yeah, if I go to the the plant, site plan, there, it's basically back here over this piece is is back on this line right here.
And there's some distance to the property line, but on the other side of the property there um, is an existing structure. So wha- what are the opportunities for shielding of um, the lighting so that it doesn't trespass?
And again, these are not floodlights. Uh, I submitted the cut sheets. They're more sconce lights, you know, they have an enclosure around them, they're historic.
I I get it, but when I look at a sconce light, I can see the filament and the lighting inside it from a horizontal, so what is the opportunity to prevent that? Because it pr- it provides glare. And un- unless there's some shielding that limits it to a certain area, it can prevent, it can provide glare to others looking at it from a a a horizontal direction.
Um, I guess it depends on the amount of lighting and the wattage. That that's probably the the opportunity there is to limit the wattage of the bulb. Uh, beyond that, I'm not sure how we would shield the fixture like this short of uh, putting maybe a translucent glass instead of a clear glass. And also lowering the wattage of the light. I think those will be the opportunities.
Well, I just think is also an issue whether it's a a bright white or a warm glow uh, light bulb. Yeah, just, I just would, um, I highly recommend that be a consideration, given that you have um, a a and a butter. And, you know, I'm not sure to the vegetative cover, but we all know that that differs with the seasons around here. And um, you know, who's to say someone may not like the light because it just provides better access control and safety measures, so you know, even during a leaves offseason. Um, I think you should, um, there should be consideration with regard to uh, preventing that from becoming um something that's not welcome to in a butter, um, or others that uh, just may appreciate the um uh, the the, what a, what a, what a well-designed fixture that prevents light trespass either in a vertical or horizontal um, direction can provide. I'll leave it at that.
John, John, can you show us the view of that comparisons to the other houses so we can see how close the neighbor is? Or how far?
I'm sure, yes, let me uh, switch back.
Yeah.
There, that's a good point.
The neighbor, the neighbor on the right-hand side is about sixty-five feet away?
Right, and they're also toward, towards the front of the street, but I totally understand what you're saying and uh I'm sometimes, but we get too focused on picking a historically appropriate fixture and thinking we're doing the right thing, but it's also a lantern, and a lantern by definition glows, and it's meant to, and it's part of the atmosphere. One could certainly argue that creates glare, but to me glare means uh, something coming from a floodlight. Or something directly pointed away at something, um. And maybe towards traffic, that could be an issue, um. Or spotlight or floodlight, but um so just again, going back to the intent of that fixture, that was the intent there, well, because certainly pick, for example, a barn light coming with an arm down ninety degrees. I think that would be the only way to truly shield a a light bulb. Um, which which I think office will be open to that. I don't think this fixture is you know, what has to be used, because certainly look at other uh, like fixtures.
All right, thank you. Deidre, you're up next.
Uh, Ken, can I just ask, then, there's no um uh, landscaping that's going to be removed between those two properties for this renovation?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay, that, because there's quite a bit of vegetation in there, I'm just curious as to as long as that, that is not being removed or doesn't need to be removed, and if it is, then something is put in its place. Okay, that was a good, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Clark?
Yeah, um, I I will say, uh, I'm an architect. This um, this is a real gem, uh, an architectural gem. The detailing is is phenomenal, uh, eighteen seventy-four, you said, John?
Right.
That's, it it's really, and and um um, uh, what you've done by pushing the um, the elevation, a narrower elevation on the right um, i- is an excellent uh, approach to the, to the, to the massing and kind of respecting what's there. And also um, giving um, a a little bit of of its own kind of personality. Now, now mansard, mansard roof houses can be um, can be elegant like this one, or or they can be um, it rather inelegant, depending on the materials, the angle of the lower kind of wall part, um, the angle of the of the roof uh, above the um, um. The, 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 where where it changes to a shallow slope, um, but but this one is, I mean, it's, it's just superb and and you've done a great job at matching the the historic details. Um, uh, on the left-hand side, is that an all-new porch?
Uh, no, this is pre-existing.
Okay, all right, all right, I was just trying to uh, get my bearings. Um, the, uh, s- so, uh, I think you've done an excellent job on the massing. This is a de minimis um, a approach as far as I'm concerned, and and it solves a lot of problems. It doesn't seem to have a tremendous impact on the abutters. Uh, and it seems to me it'll, it'll continue to be an eighteen seventy-four slash two thousand twenty-three gem. Um. With that said, I wanted to bring a couple of points. The mansard roof is identified in our new zoning bylaw. Um, the, the height i- interestingly enough, of it, it's in the zoning bylaw says to the deck line of a mansard roof. And just for everyone's benefit, um, the deck line is that, that's that line between where the roof goes shallow from where it's angled slightly. Um, uh, where John has uh, the attic floor, yeah, right there where your, where your cursor is, that is, that is called the deck line. And um uh, and that is where the, the uh, and that is where the, the thirty-five-foot height determination is based on the zoning changes at towards the end where it says roofline for, for, for a mansard roof. Uh, so you get all that shallow roof for a mansard style um above the thirty-five feet. Um, n- now, uh, I i- I, I can't really tell whether your average grade is average grade at the addition or average grade for the whole building, it should be for the whole building. Um, and and it seems like i- it, it might be close with the fifteen feet of drop-off on the back. Whether you're at thirty-five feet to the deck line, if you're at thirty-four feet or thirty-six feet, I don't think it really matters in that uh, you're, you're not going any higher than the existing uh roof. Uh, so um, you know, based on some recent case studies like Bilalta, you, you would, you would not be change, changing the, the nature of the non-conformity, if there even is one. Um, so you should be able to go right to a, to a building permit.
Okay.
Um, but you know, you wanna check that out with the, with the building inspector, and if you have any questions for me. Um, just as, the research that I took to find out what the deck line was relative to your project. I, I probably checked uh, uh, thirty or forty websites, and I finally found a diagram done by uh, the, the, the city of Fairfax, Virginia uh, that, that, that clearly detailed what the deck line is. Uh, and I couldn't find anything that, that conflicted with that uh diagram uh definition. But we don't have diagrams for, for our uh, uh, roof or height, we probably should work on some. Uh, but, but all in all, I, I think that what John has done is excellent, I, I think it, it will continue to be a good neighbor. Um, and the, the fact that it's a uh, 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 over ten percent increase, uh, I think it's a I think it's a fine example of a successful large home uh submission, and I would vote to, I would recommend we vote um, to for it without conditions.
Do you have any thoughts about, any additional thoughts about the lighting and that one?
Yeah, on the lighting, it has everything to do with the light bulb, those, those fixtures that were picked out, I did look at those, um it, they, they look great, I mean, th- these aren't cheap fixtures, the, but, but getting the right light bulb in there does make a big difference. You can't just go in and, and get uh bright white uh sixty-watt LEDs and uh, and think that uh it's gonna be okay. You know, with LEDs, it might be a ten watt warm color. But the fixtures themselves are dynamite, those are great.
All right, but, uh, since lighting is one of the criteria of the large home review, should we at least condition?
There's no spots or anything, I mean.
Yeah, all right. All right, anybody else on the board have any thoughts? I, I don't have anything to add to what's been said, so.
Uh, I have a, just a further question about the lights, so Mr. Turaki mentioned the prospect of um frosted glass, and I think that's uh, uh, an option that could potentially help to minimize the uh candle-like um lights that are currently selected. Since he also indicated that, I guess what we would ask you to do is to also speak with the the residents and ask them if they're deeply wed to the, the style of lamps that, that, that have, that have been selected, and if not, whether or not dark skylights could be um, used instead.
Yes, I, I'm fairly sure that the office will be very flexible with that and and um going that direction, I don't think they're, they're uh wed to those lights.
That's um great, thanks very much.
Yeah, I, I, I just, just to follow up, cause I brought it up, um, you know, something that's dark skies compliant fits the bill. And um, John, you did mention uh lighting that would be perhaps, you know, something that would be downward facing, um, those are typically dark sky compliant. Um, that prevents the vertical um issue. And there also, it's easy to control, also with the bulb that puts in it, but it's just based on the positioning of the bulb inside those, that the requisite shielding for that prevents the lateral trespass of lighting as well. So, uh, something that's dark sky compliant would really fit the bill and um would just uh round out what I, I would um iterate that Clark pointed out is an, is an excellent, thoroughly well-thought-out design.
Thank you, yeah, that sounds good.
All right, so is, is the board prepared to vote on this tonight?
Yes.
Notwithstanding the late submission, no, okay.
Yeah, I, I took a look at those two, the one that we got, um, the, the most recent one and the one that was in the file, and the, the changes are, are not, are obvious, or they're de minimis, it's not like, I mean, there's still thirty feet to the to the front setback line for the front of the addition, so it's, I don't, I don't think it's uh necessarily uh a, a hindrance or an obstacle in terms of information of content.
Right, somebody like to, I know you were making a motion, I guess, about without conditions, but in light of the comments, do we at least wanna have the condition that the west-facing lights be dark sky compliant? And I would like to just hold them that the west-facing vegetation is gonna remain as it is.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion would be to approve it with the conditions that the west-facing lights are dark sky compliant, and the west-facing landscaping is going to be preserved as is. Whatever it is.
I'll second that again.
All right, thank you, um, any further discussion about it? Okay, alphabetical roll call, all in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
I'm Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobson, I.
Hey, hey, thank you all, good luck with the project, it's a very
Thank you very much.
It is a great-looking house, I'm driven by it, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night.
Okay, so next we have, where's my agenda? This is under our subdivision bylaw, not the zoning bylaw, it was preliminary subdivision plan for eighty-two Border Street. Amy, if you would do us the honor of
Yes, I shall, um, notice a public hearing, Cohasset Planning Board. Pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one dash T and eighty-one dash U and the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom, Zoom platform. Webinar ID eight four four six seven three two four zero five eight. Passcode three nine three four seven five, on Wednesday, May thirty-first twenty twenty-three at approximately six thirty PM for a preliminary subdivision for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Maps. F six dash three three dash zero seven zero eighty-two Border Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five, the application seeks preliminary subdivision plan approval for creation of two buildable lots, the application is submitted by uh Eamon Omara. P O Box six one zero, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. A copy of the application and plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, Forty-One Highland Avenue. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Cohasset MA dot org forward slash five two four forward slash active PB applications. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated, signed Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you, Amy. Um, all right, so uh we have a number of people here tonight, I, I failed to recognize earlier that our town council Carolyn Murray is here, and I'm sure she will be heard on this one at some point. Um, uh, Lauren, if you would, since we have a number of people here, go over the usual rules about participating in this hearing. If you can.
Absolutely, so, uh, we will ask that all comments be directed to the chair, who will ask the appropriate party to respond as appropriate, for members of the public wishing to speak to this application, there will be a designated public comment period. We'll ask that you uh use the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen, indicate your name and your address, either in written or when we promote you to speak. Um, if you'd like to promote to speak, just raise your hand or, or write in the chat that you'd like to speak to address the board, otherwise you can leave it in comment in the chat.
Okay, yes, and if anybody wants to share a screen from the public, just ask us. Um, all right, and the order of presentation will be applicant, board, and then members of the public. Um, before we get started, Lauren is, you know, I was just looking at the bylaw, is everything here that's supposed to be here for preliminary submission?
Yeah, so it's, the application is, is uh sufficiently meeting your standards for a preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, so who's going to speak for the applicant?
Callahan, good evening, this is Adam Brodsky, I see Ms. Hudson is sharing her screen at present. I might ask her to take that down because I can't uh say anyone, but uh, in anybody, I take it you can hear me?
Well, we can hear you and I can see you, you're smiling.
Thank you very much. A good evening, I represent uh Co-Lobster LLC. Tom Sullivan, who is the manager, is present this evening, as well as Eamon Omara, who is our project manager. And you know Carmen Hudson, our professional engineer from Merrill. And in an effort to be fully transparent, we've submitted this preliminary subdivision plan pursuant to general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, the subdivision control law as well as general laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, the zoning act, to obtain a zoning freeze. Uh, we are not proposing a project at the present time, and ultimately may not uh implement the proposed subdivision. Um, it's nice to see Ms. Lynn pinch hitting, I presume. And, and uh, she's confirmed um that we've submitted uh, a filing that meets your requirements, and in fact, in order to obtain a zoning freeze, all that we're required to do is to substantially comply with the requirements of the subdivision control law. Uh, regardless of whether you approve or deny the preliminary plan, in order to have the benefit of a freeze, we will have to file a definitive plan within seven months of submission of the preliminary plan. And during the review of the subdivision plan, as you likely know, we have the benefit of a process freeze. And once the definitive plan is approved, uh, we would have the benefit of an eight-year plan freeze. Both freezes are available, even if ultimately a building permit application is not related to the subdivision plan or the land is not divided. And it is appropriate to submit a preliminary plan with no intention to implement it uh, but to solely secure the freeze, which is likely going to be the outcome here. So I just wanted to give you a, a general overview of the subdivision plan freeze. Uh, and I'm happy to answer your questions regarding the process, obviously town council is present. But unless you have questions for me, I'm gonna turn over to Ms. Hudson to explain the preliminary subdivision plan. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, uh, it's good to see you, Lauren, I didn't expect to see you, I didn't get to say goodbye, so I am very glad that you're here with us tonight, uh, thank you, Adam. Um, and I absolutely agree with you, Adam, when I shared my screen, I could not see anyone either. I wasn't aware that you couldn't either, um, so, but I could hear everyone, um. So the, this is a plan set that we use for this preliminary subdivision, as uh Adam mentioned, the owner is Co-Lobster LLC, and the applicant here tonight with us is Eamon Omara. Um let me uh, describe the, the property. So I'm sure all of you are very familiar with this property, this is the Lobster Pound. Um, this has, i- it's a lot that is comprised primarily of water. Uh, the total lot area to mean low water is thirty-eight thousand one hundred square feet, more or less. However, less than half of that, only fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three square feet is comprised of app land. Uh, if you can see this, this is the limit of the main high water line which uh shows what the limit of the app land is on the lot, and there is also app land in this area, which is comprised of ledge, it's a very large ledge outcropping. Uh, presently, there are four buildings on the site. Uh, these are the, the four buildings, and everything between our decks uh, the surface within the, within the lot that is not comprised of buildings, is comprised of pavement or water. Uh, currently, there is a sidewalk, you can see it here, hatched in, in gray, that uh, cr- uh, it crosses the front of the property. Once again, this subdivision is only in front of you because of, as we, we are looking for a zoning freeze, however, the reason that um, I have divided the, the property into two lots, as I am about to show you is to show that, or at least, um, have this portion of the property that is currently being used as a public sidewalk outside of the two new lots. So currently, there is just one large lot with limited app land with several buildings on them, uh, four buildings and decks, uh, the entire lot is located within the floodplain, and it is within the waterfront district business, I'm sorry, within the waterfront business district. Um, so what we are proposing is to divide the property into two lots, as I mentioned. Instead of creating a new road, what we're proposing to do is to uh grant this portion of the property, which is comprises seven thousand forty-nine square feet uh, towards the existing street layout. Therefore, the street layout for Border Street would come to this point, and then it would go into what the property is today so that all of the existing uh public sidewalk would be located within the street layout.
Excuse me, Carmen, so you're, you're proposing to um convey that thousand square, square feet plus or minus to the town for the purposes of a public way to get the, the public off of the private property lot?
Yeah, so under this concept, instead of, so whenever a road is created right, it could be either accepted by the town, and it would be a public road, or it could be a pri- uh, private road. So in this case, instead of creating a brand-new road, what we're doing is uh, making this part of the, the existing street layout. Um, so therefore, we are changing the property boundaries, we are creating, you know, a different frontage, we're actually losing frontage under this concept.
I'm sorry, you, so you're not conveying the thousand square feet, you're using that as uh an extension of the, the Border Street um uh, as a part of your subdivision?
Well, so, when we have when you have a subdivision, right, and there is a subdivision road when you're saying as part of your subdivision, there are lots and a road. So in this case, this would be part of the road, and in this case is an existing road. So I don't know if maybe I'm not explaining myself correctly, so.
Who owns that uh skinny wedge? The thousand square feet, who owns it currently?
Right now, this is part of the locust property, so Co-Lobster LLC owns this, but just like, mm-hmm.
So that would be a part of the, part, still a part of the property, but it would be used as a public way?
You mean, it is?
Since Border Street is public, it would be, is, I mean in a, like a normal, in a normal subdivision with forty houses, and you're creating roads, that, that's because this is just two lots and an awful small amount of um of actual area. You, you're proposing, instead of creating a street, you're, you're um creating um the sidewalk that would be a kind of public accommodation but outside of the locuses of the two new lots that are being created?
Exactly.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, Adam, can you confirm what you're doing, what's going on here with this?
Yes, no, my understanding is we're not creating a way that still remains a portion of the properties. It will be, I believe the intention is to essentially make it available to the public. How mechanically that happens, we're not in a position to answer that question. And as I said, there's a distinct possibility that this subdivision may not be implemented.
All right, well, is there a reason for doing this?
Yeah, it says, there's a language at the bottom of the picture that says.
I can't read it, so.
One zero four nine square feet, new street layout to keep public sidewalk outside of property.
So that eventually, it speaks to me that there will eventually be an offer of conveyance to the town. Or to, yeah, yeah. All right. I can't get it going. I'm sorry, Carmen, go ahead.
Oh, no worries at all. So just lastly, I wanted to mention that the two lots, the two new lots that we're proposing, so they would comprise the entire property but this. They are conforming to all the zoning regulations. And I mean, we have, there is no minimum lot area. There is a minimum of twenty feet of frontage. Both of them have well over that. And also they would be conforming to the building setbacks as you see. So it's a very simple subdivision, but once again, the purpose of this is for a zoning freeze and.
I mean, the existing building, the existing buildings don't conform to the setbacks, but.
No, so as part of, if I may go to the previous page, we're proposing to remove the existing buildings as part of this subdivision, if it were to happen. So therefore, there would be no non-conforming buildings because there would be no buildings. You are correct. For example, this building in the front actually crosses the front property boundary, so there's this small portion of the deck. This building is within the building setbacks. This would be too close to this, you know, property boundary as well. So you are correct, the existing buildings wouldn't conform. But that is why they are being proposed to be erased if this subdivision were to happen.
So those buildings and whatever those uses, whatever they're conforming, non-conforming, they would be abandoned. The buildings and those uses would be abandoned by your subdivision and tearing down those existing buildings.
Yes, so they couldn't just be abandoned, because for example, this would have to be raised because it's within the building setback, so it's non-conforming. Could it be continued because it's an existing non-conformity that would be up to the up to the ZBA really, you know? As far as this is concerned, as you know, actually, no, that is a residential building, so that is within the building setback as well. So.
Carmen, but if you're saying you're going to be demolishing the buildings as a part of this subdivision proposal, preliminary subdivision proposal, then those existing uses would be abandoned by them being removed?
Yes, of course.
Only if those, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Brewer, only if those uses don't conform to current zoning.
Exactly.
So if there's a use that conforms to zoning, then you get to do it, right? Conservation Commission notwithstanding. Yeah, okay.
Carmen, you mentioned that both of the structures, well, there's four structures, so the left structure, which is tilted slightly, you indicated that it has twenty feet of frontage, but how is that determined? Because the structure itself is, at this point, not perpendicular to the road.
It's the lot that has the frontage, not the structure.
Okay.
So this lot line, the front lot line has to be at least twenty feet, and in this case is over eighty-seven feet.
Right, okay. I just couldn't see the numbers.
All right, let's keep them with their flow, and then we'll ask our questions. So go ahead, Carmen, if you have more.
Actually, I was done with my presentation, and I was going to welcome any questions, so.
Anybody else from your team going to make a presentation?
Hi, Eamon Omara here. I can't find my hand to raise up on the screen for some reason.
All right, well, we see you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, good evening. Thanks for having us. I just wanted to clarify a few things. I mean, our zoning freeze application was really just a technical one. We haven't finished the design work with the project. The raising of the buildings, which is why I jumped in, is not the intent entirely. The property is actually subdivided into a velocity zone and an E-zone. And the boat building that Carmen was showing is actually in the velocity zone is really a problematic building. It's actually kind of underwater at this point quite often. That's the building we intend to take down. The other buildings we tend to preserve. So we have Holdy Martinez and Merrill working through the final designs. We will present to the boards in the town, the actual design, which we think is great. The intent is to do an inn, you know, a hotel project, which is complementary to the Cohasset War Project, which you approved. And the whole idea is to sort of seamlessly tie this together. The sidewalk piece is critically important for the public safety part. But really, the intent is to just present the zoning freeze now, and then come back with a detailed presentation around the project. But just to be clear, we're not looking to obviously take down all the buildings. That's never been the intent that Tom has had. The design is in process, and we're going to present those to you probably very soon. So then you'll see the details, and we think it's fantastic. But everything's going to fit within this very complicated puzzle, but it's not complete yet.
Sorry, the building that.
I'm sorry, Deirdre, I'm just curious, is what you think you need to freeze for?
Yeah. And which building? Again, is it the Lobster Pound building you claim is underwater?
Well, we call it the boat building, which is in the left-hand lot.
Frank's Boat Building, okay.
Well, that boat building is, you know, almost regularly or weekly flooded out in the first floor, but it's also in a velocity zone, which is a different zone. So in the redevelopment of the property, we have to actually treat that side of the property differently than the right side of the property. And we're working through those designs now. But the you know, they're just not complete.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify. So the intent, as Adam mentioned, the reason for this subdivision that we're showing you, the preliminary subdivision plan that we're showing you right now, is simply to freeze zoning. Once the definition of building height was changed, then the existing buildings would become non-conforming to your new definition of height. As far as part of the proposed project, which is not in front of you at this time, we are planning to maybe lift a couple of the existing buildings, so they're more conforming to the floodplain, the requirements of the floodplain. And I think that's why Eamon was mentioning the velocity zone and whatnot. And that is the reason why we need to freeze zoning, so that we don't need a special permit or for lifting the buildings. However, the project, the work in front of you has nothing to do with a proposed project that we haven't even finished, you know, putting the concept together for. What is in front of you is a subdivision of land. And that is all. And in this, if this land were to be subdivided, as we are showing on this plan, then these buildings would be removed if a new non-conformity with zoning were to be created. Because one of the requirements is that no new zoning non-conformities are created. So that is all.
Well, we reserve the right to be curious about what the end objective is, because there's been rumors flying. So, you know, all over about what was going to come here. And by the way, I am looking at our table of uses for everybody's benefit. Hotel and motel is allowable by special permit of the zoning board, so.
Yes, Chair Callahan, just to clarify that, any new project is going to require a special permit for use. It's going to require site plan review, and obviously it will need an order of conditions and a stormwater permit. And we'll have to go through that full review process that everyone is familiar with. As Ms. Hudson said, this is simply a preliminary subdivision plan to freeze zoning.
Okay. All right, to start with the further comments of the board, Amy, I want to start with first, Lauren and Carolyn, if you have something you'd like to contribute at the moment, or you want to wait, that's up to you.
I have nothing to add at this time, thank you.
Okay, Carol?
I'll wait to the end, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, so we'll, Amy, you started first last time. I'll start with Deirdre, if you want to start. You don't have to, you can pass.
I will, I will wait till the end. I am not sure where to start with my questions.
Next in the alphabetical rotation is Clark Brewer.
Yeah, I mean, the clarifications that I got, I think I'm, I understand what's on the table here. I would ask council to advise the board as to what this step means and what the options are verifying what Attorney Brodsky's already said.
Yes, indeed. My only question about the plan is, do you have the calculation for how much of these lots is upland above high water? Because obviously, most of them are below water.
I'm sorry, do I have any calculations regarding what?
What's the upland part of the properties, the parts that's above?
It's on the diagrams.
Is it? Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's very small.
Yeah, I couldn't see it. Okay. All right, Amy?
I have no, I have no comments.
Okay, last but not least, Kevin?
I do not have any at this time either.
All right, then I'll turn this over to members of the public. I know we've had some inquiries about this, about possibly making this an in-person meeting, but we couldn't change it at the last minute. Does anybody from the public wish to be heard? Let us know in the comments or raising your hand if you want to be promoted, so we can see you. Please do, please just ask. Anyone out there? Okay, I guess not. All right, Carolyn. If you could, as Clark asked, I think, to summary the whole thing, keep Mr. Brodsky honest that he's told us everything correctly.
I can do that, Mr. Chairman. As Attorney Brodsky said, you know, this is a preliminary, non-residential subdivision plan, so they're required under chapter forty-one to file a preliminary plan. In order to take advantage of the zoning freeze, they do have to follow up in seven months with a definitive plan. And for that period of time between now, and while that definitive plan is before the planning board for consideration, as Attorney Brodsky says, that the land enjoys what's called a process freeze. If the board ultimately endorses the subdivision plan, it then enjoys an eight-year zoning freeze. As far as the preliminary plan that's before you this evening, the board, you know, these are intended to be conversation starters. They're not intended to be a full-blown or fully-designed plan. The board has forty-five days to act on it. And by my calculation, this was filed on April twentieth, so you are bumping right up against that forty-five-day period. But the board, you know, has the options of approving this plan, denying the plan, approving it with conditions, or you could simply take no action. In which case, nothing is going to affect it. There is no right of the applicant to to appeal this, you know, a decision of the board of a preliminary plan. It can't be recorded. It just starts the process for a definitive plan to eventually come forward. So I think I've addressed Mr. Brewer's questions, but I think Attorney Brodsky accurately represented, you know, what the intent here is and the repercussions of that.
And the applicability of our new definition of height?
The definition of height is going to apply, because what started everything in terms of what applies is this application was filed on April twentieth. So it's the bylaw that was in effect as of April twentieth. Now, you're going to say to me, town meeting wasn't until May first, which is correct. But the zoning amendment, actually, I take that back now. The zoning, since this is a subdivision, the zoning amendment would have applied to a building permit or would have applied to a special permit. But no, it is not going to apply to a subdivision plan. So if they, you know, they will.
It will apply to a future special permit.
It will apply to a future special permit, yes. So if the hotel motel, if that's what they eventually built here, has to exceed or raise the buildings up, it will apply to a future project, yes.
All right, and I don't know how the forty-five days we got up against the line, but we can't really, we don't have the time to extend this to our meeting next week if we wanted to, if we wanted to think about this, but.
You could always request an extension.
You might not need to be there, but anyway, we have Mr. Collins from the public. I thought you were going to want to say something tonight, so Fran, you have the floor.
Thank you, Tom. Evening, everybody. My main concern is that.
Name and address, please.
Francis Collins, four oh four South Main Street. My concern is that that is a water-dependent use zone. And we don't have any more land in Cohasset around the water that can be used for water-dependent use. Boat yards, boat storage, motor repairs, marinas, all sorts of things. And I can't, I can't tell a fellow how to spend his money and what he wants to do with it. I appreciate there's some great planning going on here, but I can't see in any way how a hotel, and we're not talking about a hotel right now, I understand that. Our hotel is going to be water-dependent use zone, whether we have two lots or one lot there. So I think we need to give some serious consideration to the water-use-dependent zone. That's about it that we have in Cohasset. So they're my comments. Thank you, Tom.
Well, and I appreciate those, but again, you know, looking right at our chart, table of uses, a hotel and motel isn't and be allowed by a special permit of the zoning board. They have to make certain findings to do it, but it can be allowed. But let me, related to that, is this got to go through chapter ninety-one as well, Carolyn?
Chair, Callahan, that is correct. And Ms. Murray is likely, whereas several members of the planning board is that there's pending in front of Mass D P Waterways, a request for determination with respect to compliance with chapter ninety-one for the site. So we're in front of that with respect to this property.
And I think Fran's point is well taken, but, you know, again, you know, we are reforming the bylaw, but we can't, we can't do it in secret and spring things on people. It's a public process. You know, freezes are inevitably going to be sought, and we just, you know, we have to deal with it. But it's been an allowed use under a bylaw for decades, so, or allowed by special permit use.
Just a quick kind of comment.
Well, just identify some for the record.
Oh, Gail Collins, four oh four South Main Street. That's it, of course. This is asking for a zoning freeze. Is that right or wrong?
Right.
To divide the property?
Right.
Yes?
Yes, they want to, they want to preserve the zoning that exists both as to uses and to dimensions that we have today. Anticipating that if we make some changes, they will not be subject to the changes to. Anticipating that if we make some changes, they will not be subject to the changes, to the extent the changes would would affect them somewhat.
All right, that's so. It seems kind of peculiar to approve, to approve a freezing of the zoning of dividing the two pieces of property without knowing, having any idea what's going into the both those uh subdivisions.
Unfortunately, I get Carolyn can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but unfortunately, we don't have much of a choice in that respect.
Correct, I mean, a zoning freeze is a tool that any property owner can avail themselves of. Um, and when you're looking at a preliminary plan, you're not looking at what they ultimately intend to do with the property, you're just looking at the plan as it exists.
Do you then, I under- I understand that, thank you for clarifying, yeah, but the, do you then lose? Are there plenty of controls going down the road? Do you lose some controls by dividing the property according to this freeze?
Well, I I, in in terms of control, uh again, this particular use that they've thrown out there and, you know, getting the confirming what everybody's heard as a rumor for a long time, so I appreciate that they did that and and we're being transparent about that. But um the the use is allowed or by special permit, there's a number of uses that are allowed by special permit, most of the uses are by special permit. Uh, in terms of, you know, I can't, I'm I'm not going to get into the explanation of why they're dividing it in two, but it is true that our current bylaw has no minimum lot size for the waterfront business district, so it can be a postage stamp or it could be what we have here. Uh, they do have setbacks for the, whatever they build there. And they have a frontage requirement that is nearly twenty feet, and again, that's a function of the fact that the harbor properties tend to be a little smaller, and we've tried to, over the decades, encourage some use of our limited waterfront, um so they're they're in compliance in that respect, you know, and whether they divide it into one lot, two lots, however many lots, it can only do the uses that the bylaw is going to allow. Um, and most, again, most of those are by special permit, and that will fall under the the purview of the zoning board to make decisions on. Chapter ninety-one, the state process, yes, they're big on, you know, the water-dependent uses and access. The hotel project had to go through that, um the Atlantica rebuild has had to go through that or is going through that. So, um, you know, there are a lot of people who are going to have eyes on this. But the bylaw is going to allow this to happen in one form or another, assuming that, you know, the zoning board agrees, so.
So, but to go back to uh my last comment, please, to to go back to chapter ninety-one, that, chapter ninety-one goes back many, many years. Um, and it talks about public use, so.
Talks about public, public access.
Public access.
Not use necessarily. And for example.
I'll I'll double check on that, I thought.
No, no, but as an example, you know, the hotel project, part of it, the way it's been designed, being pushed up toward the sidewalk, is that there's public access in the back, a park and the walkway. The 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 new, the rebuild of the Atlantica site, it's got the harbor walk continuing around the back of that, and it's got a a a walkway going through the building to get to that, so uh, you know, these things are all that that's what ninety-one is really looking at, is public access, I think, not so much.
And water dependency, besides public access.
No, it says here, it says, pro- protects from most tidal lands as a workplace for commercial fishing, shipping, passenger transportation, boat building and repair marinas, and other activities for which proximity to the water is either essential or highly advantageous. Chapter ninety-one, an overview summary from.
Yeah, no, I I I appreciate that, but under chapter ninety-one, people get licenses for condominiums in Cohasset. Rose Wharf Hotel and Restaurant in Boston, and, you know, so there are other uses that can be permitted, like it or not, there are other uses that can be permitted. Uh, and so, you know, I don't want to comment too much on the ninety-one process, I'm not an expert on it, but they do have to go through that, and they're going to have to go, you know, and I I I suppose in the ninety-one process, D E P can say yes or no to this proposed use, they're going to have to have a proposed use at that point, so.
That's okay.
Carolyn, tell me if I'm wrong anywhere, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think you've captured it, Tom.
Before Adam screams at me.
No, no, Chair Callahan, I was going to confirm that we are going to have to comply with the chapter ninety-one regulations for those portions of the property that are within Waterways jurisdiction.
And, you know, as far as the uses go, you know, one of the zoning freezes is, for example, if we decide in the redoing of the uses in the in the waterfront or our district, whatever we're going to call it. And we said, no more hotels, no more possibilities of a hotel, well, this freeze will prevent that new rule from applying, so that's that's what they're looking to do, and and again, Carolyn's right, that anybody in the town right now who thinks they might be impacted by uh whatever we cook up in a new bylaw, you know, can can apply for a a freeze, I mean, under forty-one, eighty-one, Q, whatever it is, so. All right, anyone else, uh, anyone else from the public before we? All right, so um again, Carolyn, our choices tonight, approve, deny, or take no action, none of that really impacts one way or the other.
You you could also prove with with some conditions that they could consider when they come back with a definitive plan.
Okay. Open it to the board, anybody have any thoughts on on that, I'm going to course forward with this? And let me, let me just ask, if we take a no decision or a negative decision, that doesn't impact decisions we can make for a definitive plan down the road?
Correct, the only thing is, Mr. Chairman, that if you do deny the preliminary plan, um, the board should state reasons for denial in the record.
Which which we have done uh within the last year and another project, Kevin, I saw your hand go up briefly.
Yeah, Tom, um could perhaps you or Carolyn explain how the um exposure of bedrock may or may not be a potential issue with regard to development over there, um, there's a building that is currently on pilings over daylighted bedrock, I mean.
Right.
That building were to be removed, then we have exposed bedrock.
Right.
Could that play with regard to decisions made?
Our ledge protection bylaw would come into play. And so we would have limitations on blasting or chipping away at it, and I would hope that any future project might take this to heart, leaves that piece of ledge alone, it's, you know, it's one of the defining characteristics of Cohasset. Um, particularly if you're going to have to go up, you can still use pilings and stilts to go over, it doesn't have to be destroyed, but yes, that bylaw would come into play.
If if it's daylighted, if the building that's over it now were raised, removed, could another building be put in the same location that covers it up again?
I don't think our ledge protection bylaw actually even contemplates that, much less addresses it, so I would, I I think the the bylaw is designed to keep it from being chipped and blasted away. So, I think, my personal view, I I, you know, I don't want to be caught, because somebody will remind me of this months from now, but it it's not, it's a unique situation that we have not had to confront when we dealt with exposed ledge around town. I think if they leave it be and candle, you know, candle lever or two pilings over it and leave it be where it's still visible to the public, I think that probably would be fine. I don't think, I I don't think they have many choices, but I certainly I would discourage blasting it away, because I I think that would be a hard sell. Yep.
Hi, this is, uh, oh, sorry, uh, Kevin, I just wanted to quickly, um, you know, talk about that, I mean, we're not proposing at all to remove the building to sit on the ledge. That's not the concept, and we're just strictly in the the subdivision plan here tonight, but you know, we're not proposing removing any of the buildings on the ledge on that, on that side, you know, the one building that's inside the property line is a bit of a problem, but the ones that we all know that we love that sit and that are, you know, really wonderful buildings to sit on the ledge, we're not intending to remove those at all. We just don't have the design ready to present to you yet. But I just, you know, that came up earlier, the idea of removing all these buildings, that's not our intent at all. The one building on the left, the boat building is a problem, the other buildings are are stunning buildings, we that are sitting on the ledge, those are not intended to at all, to be removed at all. Well, that's good to hear, I mean, I I I would say that the the buildings themselves are 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 really fantastic buildings, that is a view of the harbor, so uh being able to a- a- adaptively reuse reuse those um for your purposes, sounds great. It just does say on the preliminary subdivision plan, buildings to be removed. And and uh Tom, maybe it'd be worth for the board to discuss, um, I mean, I I I kind of think that the take no action, and I mean, this is a mechanism to freeze zoning if it's needed. It may not be needed, but but what the applicant is telling us is, they want to do something, they want to preserve some of the buildings, some of the buildings not, they they're they're, they want a zoning freeze that gives them some options down the road. It's, it seems to me, I I I can't really say I'm, I want to vote for a preliminary plan that's just a mechanism for uh preserving zoning or deny it. I I can't think of any.
I I'm not seeing.
At this point, that, so, my, my sense is to um, uh, allow it to have constructive approval and take no action, but why don't we discuss it?
No, I I kind of agree, I don't think we have grounds to deny this at this, you know, from what we have, and and we are under the gun of time, and yes, they.
Or denial wouldn't matter, right? It wouldn't matter if we did it.
No, and and neither does does no decision matter, so, um, you know, I, again, and state law is what it is, and compels us to in this position where we really don't get a yes or a true yes or no. So, you know, I, my thinking right now is to just no decision and and.
That's, you're confirming what I, what I said.
Yes, yeah, I I I agree with that, I don't know, what it, Deirdre?
I agree with with Clark. Amy, I agree, a no, a no decision at this point, sorry, Clark, bye.
Doesn't happen very often. Thanks.
Yeah, this is, this is unusual, we're agreeing on no decision on anything. Uh, Amy or Kevin, any thoughts on on that prospect of just going with a no decision?
I don't think we have enough information to really embellish a state. And as long as we are not um removing the rights of the owner to proceed with their plans, and we do have the option of taking no action, um, it just seems easy from a bureaucratic perspective.
Uh, what, just one.
It may, it may seem like we have no guts, but I mean, again, strategically, no, I I, but I'm strategically, it it has no great impact one way or the other legally, so um, I I I don't, I given that we're up against a deadline, given that there's still a lot of things to know about this, I think the no decision right now is the safe way for us to proceed, but and Carolyn, Carolyn, again, just to affirm, if we do that, we're not prejudiced for the future or in any way, shape or form.
Regardless of whether you approve it, deny it, or approve it with conditions, it has no impact on when the definitive plan is fully before you, and you're applying your subdivision rules and regs and considering waivers, et cetera, no matter what you take. I I do just want to point out, though, that the statute doesn't recognize a take no action. It would, you know, it's approved, approve with 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 some recommended modifications, or it's deny. You know, if you.
But it's constructive approval, right, Carolyn?
There is no constructive approval of a preliminary plan, it just is something that it will die a natural death after forty-five days, but that doesn't preclude them from filing their definitive plan within seven months.
Okay.
And it doesn't impact their zoning freeze.
Okay.
Talk about uh confusing and also nonsensical, this is a good case.
And as I said, I think the only purpose of it is to be a conversation starter for a non-residential development, so that you get a sneak peek to sort of look at it and maybe make some, you know, make some suggestions that the developer might incorporate in a in a definitive plan.
You wonder what genius downtown thought this one.
He don't know.
I mean, real realistically, we don't have even enough information to make recommendations or suggestions because because the way that the physical site is laid out, there's just not enough information.
Enough for this purpose, though, for this limited purpose, you know, so.
I would. I would, I would, um you know, what Amy said, we don't have enough information, but I do find that in the initial discussion about that sliver of land interesting. And I wonder whether there is an issue or has been identified an issue, either on be part of the town, part of users of the road, residents along the road in that area, people that like to traverse that area, be it by road or by bike or by walking on or off a sidewalk or on the shoulder of the road, whether there is an issue with the width of the road there, or the able, the ability to use a sidewalk, a functional sidewalk, and whether the town would be interested in the conveyance of a sliver of property to make that road wider, to preserve a sidewalk over there. I I think that was an initial part of this discussion that we did get some definitive information on, and to which we could perhaps opine on here. Um, maybe based on past discussions of uses in this area or um other properties that we've made decisions on that are very close to it and know in the road in the area.
I I I get it from a liability perspective that they don't want the responsibility for it, but you know, one of the things that's being talked about is um an impact, a development impact bylaw that we don't have right now. Sometimes we get voluntary commitments, like one of the projects in the village, we're, you know, getting a new sidewalk in front of that site, when it crosses that site. Um, the zoning freeze wouldn't matter if we passed such a bylaw, but I would certainly encourage the applicant to consider, you know, upgrading that sidewalk, no matter who ends up owning it. You know, I think we should make sure these areas, particularly if the use is a hotel, there's going to be a lot more people walking and using that area that, you know, you look towards the impact of this and helping the town out with safe access in that area, like, you know, that's just a thought for the future.
Uh, Tom, can I just add some some details? We had such a successful collaboration on Cohasset Wharf, and really, we thought through it so heavily about the things we talk about, public access. And this property is super complicated.
Yeah.
And, you know, you know, hats off to Tom Sullivan to to own this and, you know, take it on, and then he said, you know, let let's figure this out, and, you know, Carmen Hudson has sort of unraveled this puzzle. We are working on something now that's really going to be elegant, that's going to work. The sidewalk piece is really related to some of that public safety, there's a crosswalk right there. And the connection from downtown to the Salem Club is something that's very important. I live on Border Street. Uh, Francis Collins is on the Gulf, uh, he and I have met, he can vote over to me. I care about this very much, I walk by the property every day. We're trying to be able to identify what are our boundaries, so that we can properly design the project. And again, the existing buildings and the ledge, we're going, we want to keep those buildings, they're beautiful. Um, the one that's on the street is a bit of a problem that pops in, and the and then the boat building is is really um, sort of obsolete in a sense because of the water problem, but just we're we're pulling together something now that if we look at that same collaboration we had on Cohasset Wharf and stitch that together with this property that Tom owns both of them, um, we're going to present to you that, and then we can, as a team, look through that whole design and look at it how it conforms to zoning, our strategy is to conform to zoning. That's the whole intent, it's it's too impossible to try to, you know, uh, uh, work, work through anything else, so we we've worked successfully. We, we've worked successfully together before. We're going to be in front of you probably very soon. I mean, the work is underway with Houdley Martinez. And Merrill. Uh, we just had to do the zoning freeze to, you know, do the proper things that relates to the property rights that we have. But we just, just, we are really trying to do something wonderful here that's beneficial. To the town. Um, I think it's going to be um. Well received and we'll review it together. You know, we'll review it together when we have it done. But we're not really there. So it's a little confusing because we're talking about technical issues, but we don't have a design to present. So I understand that Collins' position, like what are we talking about? But really this is almost. A very technical. Uh, application and a meeting that we want to just. Be able to resolve so that we understand our boundaries of what's understood under the current zoning so that we can finish the design work and then come back to you and present the project. Um, but the intent is, the intent is, is, is very positive. And we proved it before in the Cohasset Wharf project and we're going to do the same sort of thing here. So. Um. You know, it, you know, we will be back together quite soon with the actual application. To the planning board with the drawings and the actual design and we can review those in detail then. But we're not, we're not trying to, you know, um. Hold anything back. We just, we just went through a process with, with Carmen and Adam's application in advance of, you know, buttoning up the, the design itself.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything to say? Otherwise, um. Guess we'll entertain a motion. Someone would like to frame one. I guess a motion would be to just approve or disapprove. We just want to sit here and do nothing. It's just. Carolyn, because you're saying there's no formal vote to just do nothing.
Correct.
All right, so.
That seems like the best, first off, that, that show is a sign of good faith, not a sign of bad faith. I think is where we've been told something we didn't know before. And that seems sufficient at this moment since we will be seeing them in the near future.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take no action as being a negative, but, but I just think we're, we're put into a position. Of getting this set at a late date with little time to really think about it, but um. So what's the board's pleasure?
But I mean, if it's a straw pole. I, I'd stick with take no action.
Mm hmm. Anybody else? I, I kind of agree with that, so.
That's my sentiment.
Okay. To you, Drew and Kevin?
None. I'm, I'm with you all. Yep.
Okay. I think you get the gist of it though, Adam and everyone, Aiman, you know. Not negative, but not, you know. We're, we're not at the point of endorsing what we know, you know, at this point.
Well, I, I, I think, I think Amy's comment, which is the goodwill. And I, I think we'll, we'll let the project speak for itself when we present it to you.
Okay, looking, looking forward to it, so.
And, uh, Aiman, it, it doesn't hurt to, to come on, come in with, you know, the fifty percent concept in, ahead of a full, uh, site plan. Review, uh, and with the approval expectation to get to capture any preliminary comments or reaction to what you've got in mind. You know, and if that um, helps.
Absolutely. We'd love to do that. I'm just trying to get past Carmen's confusing puzzle of a drawing.
Yeah, I, you know, and Fran is on.
It's complicated. It's complicated.
It's a complicated situation, but we're going to make it better. But I think we'll do that, Clark. I think that Susan has reached out to you in the past as well. And Karina about, you know, here's some ideas. Um. And as we showed at Cohasset Wharf, it's really improving. It's, it's all about improving the situation. Um, and, you know, ob- obviously we, you know, we, we'll work together on that for sure.
Yeah, great, because that's like Cohasset's motif number one. I, I personally have used the um, the um, the mast rig that's out. By the, the boat shed. Uh, to pull my masts out of my boat because they're like two hundred pounds. And, you know, I paid Frank like ten bucks to, to use it for, for ten minutes. It was like, yeah. That was the exact perfect thing I needed to lift my wood boat masts out.
Well, excellent. I mean. We realize how important this is. We're, we're, we're solving it now. We have, you know, I think the A team and Adam and. Carmen and, you know, Houdley Martinez, of course. Um, we recognize all the boundaries, all the restrictions, the intent, the desires. And um. Why don't we intend to, you know, get to what they're fifty percent and talk about some ideas about that and how that ties together what was already been approved with Glass at Wharf. Um, and then, you know, when we're submitting the actual applications. Um, you know, consistent with the zoning that we're, you know, focused on. We'll, we'll get into the, into the weeds.
Okay. I was going to say, Fran, Fran is a member of the Harbor Committee. You might want to reach out to that committee. I mean, they don't have any, they don't have any permitting authority, but it just might be a good idea to run.
Fran Collins, you mean?
No, but the Harbor Committee, he's a member of the Harbor Committee as well. So it'd be a good idea to probably, probably speak to them, you know.
Okay.
All right, uh, so I guess that's our action. We'll close this hearing and uh, we'll see you shortly, I assume, I assume, so. Thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night. Night.
Do we have any other business?
No, we don't.
I don't think we do. Has anybody else got something to add? Okay, then I'll entertain them. Thank you again for your support tonight. I'll. Lauren, I guess we will not see you much in the future. But uh, thank you for being here tonight and for your help again over the years. Um, and uh.
Best of luck, Lauren.
Thanks, everyone. It's been a pleasure.
I miss you.
Yes, thank you, Lauren. We'll miss you.
Um, okay, so uh, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, alphabetical roll call in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmar, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deidre Hobbs, and I.
Okay, that's great.
Thanks.
So, yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn and Lauren.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night. Good night, Carolyn.